Welcome to this, welcome to this meeting of the Milton Planning Board. It's our fourteenth meeting of the fiscal year 2014, which began last July.
The first meeting of actual 2014.
It is the first meeting of actual 2014. And I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman. And why don't the other people at the table introduce themselves?
Ed Duffy, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
Brittany Grunsch, member.
Jean Peterson, clerk.
William Clark, planning director.
Emily Ennis, member.
All right. I haven't looked at the minutes because we got, I got so involved in the zoning that, so we're going to defer the past minutes, but we are going to meet again later in January. Do we think that it will be next week or the week after?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
Yeah.
Two weeks from today.
Mm-hmm.
All right. That sounds right. The twenty-third.
I'm going to be late for that meeting.
How late?
I have a meeting for the selectmen on the animal shelter, so I'll be with them.
Well, make sure that the agenda is properly structured so that items which require your presence are late in the agenda rather than early.
You also know what happens to people who aren't here, right? Reassign everything to them? So that would be no change for you, right?
No change.
All right. Citizens and speak. Let citizens speak. Citizens who want to speak to the board get to do so. And we've had some excellent citizen speak sessions and are hopeful for another one tonight. Who out there would like, which of you citizens would like to speak? Well, what a disappointment. We will pass on now to...
Old business?
The new, old business. Old business.
I think everyone's here.
Shall we deal with the tree? Well, you're going to introduce yourself and let me advise you that you are being recorded and televised. So be aware.
I am beware. Good evening. Ned Corcoran, attorney on behalf of the Sullivan family, which owns the Milton Hill House and the property at thirty-six and fifty Elliot Street. Back there before this board and the word appeals a number of times for annexes and site plan approval to allow the construct development of a new residential project that is under construction on Elliot Street. There was an issue that arose. And I'm joined by Blair Hines, who is the landscape architect for the Sullivans. And Jim Sullivan is here on behalf of the Sullivans. So we're here because a component of the site plan approval required us to use best efforts to save the spruce tree which exists in front of the Henry House. For various reasons, that spruce tree is in significant danger of falling. And we were here, I think, on December, early in December, to discuss whether or not the plan that we have to replace the tree would be appropriate. I think the board wanted to make sure that we had met with the revitalization committee and the Milton Hill Neighborhood Association. And so we did that. We met with the revitalization committee on December tenth. I think, I know that Emily was present on behalf of the board. And then Forbes Sergeant, as the president of the Milton Hill Neighborhood Association, conducted a sort of email survey of the neighbors in the area to see whether or not, what their feeling was about the spruce tree and or replacing it. And I think there was a fairly strong consensus among all, both from the unanimous vote of the revitalization committee and from the survey, that replacing the spruce in kind with two sugar maple trees would be appropriate. And I think Blair can speak more specifically to the nature of the spruce as opposed to sugar maples, as which in the long run is a more appropriate tree for the location in front of the Henry House. But one of the things I think is significant is that the Henry House itself, the saving of the Henry House and the restoration of the Henry House was also an important part of the project. And the two sugar maples, which can, would frame the view of the Henry House as opposed to the large spruce, which in some ways masks its presence, I think is something that would be a nice alternative if we, if in fact the spruce has to go. So I know that Blair has developed a plan. I think we submitted copies, but I think, turn it over to Blair to talk more specifically about that and then we'd be happy to take any questions.
My name is, for the record, my name is Blair Hines from Blair Hines Design Associates, Landscape Architects.
Would you know about...
I'll say it again. My name is Blair Hines from Blair Hines Design Associates, Landscape Architects. And I wanted to start with a short comment, which is that I probably have a little bit of apology to make in that I have really liked the blue spruce there, but you know, at the time we were going through so many hearings, since a couple of people had mentioned liking the blue spruce, we decided, or I decided, not, you know, to kind of choose the battles and since there were so many and not, on top of everything else, suggest that we take the tree down because it's not all that appropriate in term, it's a very suburban tree in front of a very nice historic house. The other reason that I was thinking, considering initially about taking the tree down is it's so close to all the construction that it would be very easy for it to be damaged in the course of the work for both excavating for the building as well as utilities. And in fact, that is what has happened. So that brings us here tonight. I think that the tree, as you can see in this particular image, I mean, I had some images that showed the tree completely blocking out the Henry House if you took it from certain places, but I decided to just, you know, use this one where the Henry House is seen and you see the size of this tree, which, you know, does screen a lot as well as is a rather suburban type of a tree, not really sympathetic with a historic house. And our thought was having two sugar maples, which would eventually have a canopy that you could see underneath, would be much more appropriate both historically as well as aesthetically for the house. So we presented this to the revitalization committee. And after some discussion, I think they were all in agreement that this would be a nicer plan. So we're back here tonight asking for your relief from the, you know, one of the conditions of the approval, to be able to remove the blue spruce tree and to replace it with two sugar maples, three and a half inch caliper.
What do you think?
The Milton Revitalization Committee was happy to, as Ned said, they voted unanimously to support this. On a personal note, I think that the, you know, the spruce is in bad condition and is likely to have some trouble with the, with the construction going around it. I think also it dwarfs this house when you look at it. And it also, if you're a pedestrian walking along the street, it dwarfs, it's dwarfing that pedestrian as well. I think the sugar maples would be a very appropriate response for this house and would provide the framing, as I mentioned it, but also be a nicer streetscape level amenity for pedestrians walking along there. The two maples would provide more shade during the summer and I don't think somebody going by is going to be as overshadowed as they would be by this tree.
All right. Board members, any thoughts? I didn't. Ed?
I concur.
Okay. Mr. Clark?
You have, you received comments back from Forbes Sergeant from the Neighborhood Association, saying that the Neighborhood Association was in support of changing out the trees. You also got John Z's report for the last meeting.
Okay. We did indeed. We did indeed. Anyone in the, in the audience who didn't appear, citizen speak wants to be heard on this particular issue? Okay. So I think that I, seems to me that it's a thoughtful discussion and I'm prepared to change the site plan to permit removal of the spruce tree. So why don't we have a motion to change, make this minor modification of the site plan?
To accept the two sugar maples of three inch...
Three and a half inch.
Three and a half inch caliper in, as a replacement for the spruce tree.
As shown on the...
As shown on the plan.
I'll second Emily's motion.
Okay. Discussion, anyone? All in favor? All right. So it's a unanimous vote and...
Would you like me to prepare a draft of an addendum to the site plan?
Yes, you do that and we're going to authorize Mr. Clark to sign it. Right? That was part of your motion.
That is absolutely part of my motion.
And I'm going to, Bill, I would like to review it before you sign it. I'll prepare and I'll...
Thank you.
You said deliver it, Bill. That'd be good. Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Now, let's look at the other old business. Mr. Sheffield, you're here to discuss what?
Government changes.
Okay. Well, let's go, let's go.
Let's do zoning changes.
Zoning changes.
Or siding.
Okay. Shall we do the penalty one first?
It would be interesting to know, we have two hours remaining in the room, it would be interesting to know which ones they are here for.
Well, Mr. Sheffield commented on the penalty provision before. Here's the latest, I think I've got an extra, yeah. Here's the latest, Mr. Sheffield, on, we got two lawyers down here, the penalty provision.
We're in trouble.
We've got lawyers at both ends of the table. At both sides.
If you're at the highest track two, you're probably about where you want to be.
So what this does is, you may recall that we have a zoning power law that says when you violate the zoning, you can get fined a hundred dollars. And the dollar is not worth what it once was. And this penalty has, has become sort of minor and people don't pay much heed. So last October, there was a suggestion that we change it and make it so that each day that a zoning violation continues would constitute a new hundred dollar offense. And the town meeting thought that that was a little much. And we have a suggestion to increase the penalty, but in a lesser amount, which would be as follows. You have a zoning violation that would bring a fine of a hundred dollars potentially. And then it says during the year after an initial violation is cited to the violator by the building commissioner, each fortnight during which the violation continues shall constitute a separate offense. And I calculated that this would give a violator adequate ability to cure the violation while providing a maximum total fine of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for an unregistered automobile, that's over the course of a year, and eight thousand one hundred dollars for all their zoning violations. And I...
I don't see that.
Well, that's, that's because that's not, that's not part of the zoning. I'm telling you that.
Okay.
I computed, I did a computation and it's, the unregistered automobile would be for that year with a new violation occurring every fortnight, the maximum total fine would be thirteen fifty for an unregistered automobile. And I calculate eight thousand one hundred dollars for other zoning violations. But people would have the two-week period to cure the violation. I'd been once they cured it, that it wouldn't be a continuing, a continuing violation. It wouldn't be a new offense. Curing it would not be an offense at all. It would be just what we want people to do. So that's the proposal. Katie Condon, so do you think that a fortnight is right? Should it be a month, each month period? And I said I would, I would raise that.
Question?
Yeah.
It said a hundred dollars, but it's fifty and three hundred.
It's fifty and three hundred?
Yeah. Fifty dollars and three hundred dollars.
Yeah. So if you multiply twenty-six by...
No, it wasn't that, I was just making sure that what's in the article is, it's fifty dollars and three hundred dollars.
But we're not changing the amount.
But you'd set a hundred, so I'm just clarifying, it's actually fifty and three hundred.
There's two questions, Mr. Chairman. Because a hundred doesn't appear here.
Okay, no, fifty, I, my, well, you're not changing the...
Fifty.
The penalty section in section eleven says that...
Right. Fifty and three hundred.
Fifty dollars for each offense under section three B one A or B. And that, I think, is unregistered automobiles, Bill?
Yes.
And then the next section says that people who violate other provisions, other zoning provisions are subject to a three hundred dollar fine, which has got a little more teeth, but still probably is a bargain. If, you know, if all they have to do is pay three hundred dollars, that would be, to get the zoning violation sort of ensconced, that would not be good. So what do you think? What do the lawyers think? Mr. Sheffield?
If I could speak on this, I'd appreciate it. I spoke at town meeting on this and...
Eloquent.
Well, the point made at town meeting was I, I think there should be some limitation on what this can amount to. And you're pointing out that it can amount to...
Thousands.
So much a year. Okay, fine. I had a...
But it only lasts for a year. If you see, that's the, the wonderful thing is that it's only each fortnight during a year period.
And I think that that addresses my concern. And my concern was from a situation in which another body turned around and said, we told you to do something fifteen years ago and you didn't do it fifteen years ago and we're banging up now and that it should be a hundred dollar a day fine. And that was three thousand five hundred and fifty-three days ago. So that you should own a fine of something in the area of three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Then the commission very nicely said, we'd, we'd agree to reduce that by fifty percent and you'll only have to pay us three hundred and, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I don't think that was the purpose, the intent, I don't think that's the purpose, the intent here. But where it has been changed and there is a two-week period for the person to take action to resolve the problem, I think this is fair. And where there's an overall limit on the amount of the fine, and the fine is significant enough to make, to impel people towards action. And that's what it should be. So I would say that the revisions to this were very well thought out. I think it would be a plus to have this in our bylaw and I think it's a good change.
Now, Bill, you left, I understand why Mr. Sheffield was, the sentence to be added to each of these three things says during the year after initial violation is cited to the violator by the building commissioner, each fortnight during which the violation continues shall se, shall constitute separate offense. And you can see you left out the, during the year after initial violation is cited. So we're gonna, if you would, if...
Did you have that in that sentence?
Yeah, it's this sentence here, that you're supposed to put here, but you see, you left out this...
Second clause.
The first clause.
Okay.
Three times. If we determine that, if we, and I think that lending it to the year period, because that gives the building inspector plenty of time to go and get a cease and desist order or whatever. In other words, the building commissioner is not going to rely simply on the fines, he's going to go get an order that the violation be corrected.
That was my question, is somebody here does a zone violation and the clock starts every fortnight, it's three hundred dollars. We get to the end of the year, we've stopped fining them.
Have to issue a new...
That's true.
You would have to issue a new violation.
You could do a reciting and reaction, et cetera. The alternative is he brings them to court, to court in Quincy and the, you get a judicial order and that can have a more significant effect.
Because I can see that coming up at town meeting is for the average person, they do their violation, they pay their three, they correct it, they pay their three hundred dollar fine or six hundred or whatever and they're done. The question, and people understand that and they're not having to pay any more than that. But the question that I see coming up at town meeting is what about those who just are happy to let it mount up because they're not going to correct it? So the answer is going to be, you can sue them, you can take them to court.
You can sue them and you can...
You have to take them to court anyway.
And you could recite them. But it's...
As long as there is an answer to that, then that's...
There is an answer.
There is an answer and I think it's a rational answer. But you don't just put it in the dead file and then when somebody is selling his house fifteen years later, say, I own half of it.
That's reasonable to not do that, yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Now, planning board, there was a suggestion that we might want to make it a month period, but I like the fortnight period, just because I like the word. And also, I also think that two weeks is plenty of time for someone to cure a violation.
Was, did this meet the satisfaction of the building commissioner?
Yes, the building commissioner was enthusiastic.
Excellent. Excellent. Because this is one more tool in his arsenal.
Yes.
And I think that we should do everything possible to encourage compliance and since he is the police officer, if you will, this is something that will be of assistance to him.
I think he also sees it as a means by which he can lighten some of his enforcement load, time in court, et cetera, which will free him up to do other elements of his work, which sometimes...
It really should get the help, get people to address the, address the problem. So I agree.
So you can motion?
Okay. To submit this to the selectmen, yeah?
Yeah, then I can...
As a, as a planning board warrant article.
I don't even know that I have to say the thing. I would like to know that we submit this article to the board of selectmen for inclusion on the warrant for the May annual town meeting, twenty-fourteen.
Second.
Okay. It's going to be as...
Right, as amended.
As amended. Okay. All in favor?
Fine.
All right. Okay. Now, Mr. Clark, you have, the Thayer Nursery is seeking a zoning change to continue its, its landscaping business from its location on Hillside Street. And you've submitted an article and I've looked at it and I have indicated that if there are issues in the neighborhood, which need addressing, then to include them in the article would probably be a wise thing to do. And my thought is that if we, if we have a hearing on this in early February...
Thank you.
We would get input as to whether or not there are any such issues out there and then the planning board could recommend change as appropriate by the side side view.
I think that's, I think that's fine. It's a, it is a citizen's petition, so it is, for us go before town meeting. As it was drafted, it was intended to require under the special permit process that the Thayer Nursery address issues of concern. One of the things that they have not done and which will be done and I think, and I would hope to be ready to present, certainly would present to a public hearing, would be a draft of a site plan, which would identify how they would address specific issues of setback, say, handling of certain types of materials, et cetera, so that if there is a need to be for amendments, it can be done in accordance with something that's visually appropriate and has been prepared with comment from abutters and whatnot. So I, I think that having a public hearing, in the public hearing process, having that type of give and take and input is important. It certainly would be, be helpful in this case.
And certainly, you know, kicking the can down the road and saying the planning board will solve all of your problems later on, that's, that's, doesn't always happen. The more, as I've said before, the more specific you can be as in zoning uses like this, the better. So I, Bill, I'm, I'm thinking that in our first meeting in February, we could have a public hearing on this, we could have a public hearing on medical marijuana, and we could have a public hearing on the proposed changes to the...
Cluster?
To the cluster development.
And the penalty, we'll have to do the penalty as well.
We could, we could, we could do the penalty. And then Mr. Sullivan, I saw, has submitted a, an article and I think we probably should, should put that on too.
Do we have his? We haven't seen his yet?
We haven't seen it, we just got it tonight.
Okay.
In my alone.
Yes, I agree.
And then, and then we'll be, you know, we will attempt to make people aware that we are having a hearing on these things and see if we can get some vocal comment.
Our first regularly scheduled meeting, or our regular scheduled meeting in February would be the thirteenth. Do you think we should meet off cycle so that we could do the sixth and the thirteenth if we had to, or would you prefer to meet on the thirteenth?
I would like to meet on the, the sixth is a, well, the thirteenth is, gives us time to... I would like to meet on the, the 6th is a, well, the 13th is, gives us time to sort of talk it up. As well as to get the, the ad, I think the 13th would be on that.
I just want to make sure that we have enough time to get our recommendations to the warrant committee.
All the hearings on one night, Mr. Chairman?
I'm thinking that we should, we should try to, we should try to do them on one night. But we should not do a lot of other stuff that evening.
Yeah, if that makes sense.
Quite a night.
Right?
Could be quite a night.
We can continue if necessary, but-
I don't think there'll be too much comment on each one, but there will be comment. And comment is good.
Comment is excellent.
Yeah, well, we, the idea is that if change is necessary, it would be good to, to-
Have it first.
Identify the change earlier rather than-
Rather than later.
There's no question, you want to, you want to arrive at a big thoughtful outcome.
Okay, so we will, we will study that and make it available to the neighborhood association. And think it out, see what way, see what happens.
Oh, okay. Do we want to add a formality?
Yeah, why don't we discuss medical marijuana with the Board of Selectmen?
So you received in your packets, received by email or physically, the proposed subsection O of section three for the medical marijuana facilities. So I'm just going to walk you through it. This was a four-part effort. We started with the town of Dennis. Alex made some substantial changes, I made a bunch of changes. We ran into the Board of Selectmen and Katie Carmen made some changes. And so it's, it's been fairly well better. We start by defining the purpose, which is regulation. And then we define certain terms. We define a medical marijuana facility. We define marijuana because it's actually spelled differently in the state law than is, it is commonly spelled now. And we define marijuana for medical use. Then we define the applicability of this by law, but the part of-
Is the state not spelled up?
No, that was a- I think that was a common spelling when the laws first came onto a fact I'd seen it before. So, and it's an older spelling, it's spelled with an H rather than a J.
Don't they call it weed?
Not in the law. So the second part, starting on four eligible locations. This is the part that's going to be of most interest to many people. We have restricted the medical marijuana facilities, or MMFs, to the business district. So we're saying all uses are allowable, but they're allowable only in the business district. We are not allowing them in the residential districts.
Did that mention what the uses are?
I will, yes, that's a good point. So in the definition of a medical marijuana facility, it's, under state law, it's called a medical marijuana treatment center. And then the medical marijuana facility came in after the law was done, that term. The uses that are allowed under the law, and towns must allow all uses, are the acquisition, cultivation, possession, processing, including development of related products such as food, tinctures, aerosols, oils, or ointments. Transfers, transports, sells, distributes, dispenses, or administers marijuana for medical use. Products containing marijuana for medical use, related supplies, or educational materials to qualifying patients or their personal care drivers as authorized by state law. And the state law is chapter 369 of the Acts of 2012, just so you know. So we've limited it geographically to the business districts, the four business districts. And we then apply general requirements to all medical marijuana facilities. They can't be in a building that contains medical doctors' offices or anybody who's authorized to prescribe it. It can't be in a building that has residential units. And you can't consume it on site. Can't smoke it, you can't burn it, you can't consume it if it's a food-related product on site. And that is consistent with state law. For the uses, we've divided it into two. One is retail use and the other is the cultivation, processing, and packaging uses. The idea, and this is actually happening in many towns, is some towns are getting a retail only, what's commonly called a medical marijuana dispensary. And so we've said that the space that would dispense the medical marijuana facility is low, is in, has to be the sole use. You can't sell candy and medical marijuana, you can't sell books and medical marijuana, you can only do medical marijuana. We've restricted the interior square footage. So the idea is it would be pretty much a shop front in any of our business districts. You have to meet all the regular requirements for business use of the space. And it has to be secure. And it has to meet any regulations or requirements established by the Milton Police Department and the Milton Board of Health. For cultivation, processing, and packaging, we've upped the square footage a little bit. And have also put in provision that if you need more than 2,500 square feet, you make your case to the planning board. And we've recognized that there is a possibility that cultivation could be one use in a larger building. So for example, Two Granite Avenue, you could do hydroponics in that. So we've said if medical marijuana cultivation is in a building with more than one use, hang on, when we finish them, then yes, it has to be in a secure section. And the walls, the ceilings, the floors, all of that have been secured. We've seen too many bad movies of people drilling through the floor to rob the bank. So all of it has to be secure. And then finally, it also has to meet the requirements of the police department and the Board of Health, yes.
You mentioned Two Granite Avenue, which I think is an excellent idea or suggestion. However, that is not in the business district, so it would be prohibited in Two Granite Avenue.
My understanding is that is in the fourth business district?
It is.
We have three, we have four, yeah, we have four business districts.
I stand corrected, thank you.
We changed it about 14 years ago, yeah.
I reminded us all about a year or so ago. He said, Emily, we have four. Yeah, so I don't think a lot of people realize it. So we've then put in regulations for parking, signage, lighting, trash operations, including hours of operation, security system, and notifications of town departments. That is, we need to know who the staff are, who if there's a problem, the police can go to. It's a special permit requirement with the planning board. We've defined under that, again, the allowable uses, they have to come for site plan approval as well. We have the required documentation, which includes a security plan. And then we have additional requirements, including the name and address of the owners and all owners behind that owner. So you know if it's Medical Marijuana LLC, we want to know the people behind, we don't want to just know LLC. We want to know the people behind that. All required licenses and permits, the right to use the site, so it could be a deed or a lease. And then we've got a section on mandatory findings saying that the planning board can't issue the special permit unless it finds that the facility is designed to minimize any adverse visual or economic impacts on abutters and other parties, that it will meet all permitting requirements of all applicable agencies within the Commonwealth. And that includes the State Department of Health. And that it has, the applicant has fully satisfied the requirements of the subsection. They have to file an annual report with the town clerk showing all applicable state licenses. The term of the special permit is limited to that owner's ownership of the premises, of the medical marijuana facility. So that can't be transferred from one owner to another without approval of the planning board. And if it's not exercised within a year of issuances, it lapses. And the MMF is required to remove all material, plants, equipment, and anything else upon leaving, yes.
Question with respect to ownership of the premises?
Yes.
Is it solely the owner of the property or is a tenant with a lease of the premises?
Ownership of the premises as an MMF, that's a, that's a, that's a valid question.
Where is that?
G of the term limitations.
Last page.
The special permit for an MMF shall have a term limited to the duration of the applicant's ownership of the premises as an MMF.
Like, does the licensee is likely to be a tenant?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Let's, uh-
The applicant's ownership of the MMF?
Well, we can take that ownership.
Okay, how do you want to build that?
A term limited to the, of the, of-
Tenancy? The occupancy?
The occupancy, the applicant's occupancy of the premises, yep. Excellent.
And I, it, we can, it seems to me that within six months of ceasing operations, we should say upon ceasing operations.
I thought we changed that.
I thought we changed it too.
Yeah. Within six months upon ceasing operations, whichever, or, that's it, within six months.
No, it would be prior to surrendering its state-issued licenses or permits or upon ceasing operations, whichever comes first.
Upon ceasing, yes, okay, yeah, I had to add that, we thought I'd change that.
Then we take that ownership and put in occupancy.
Yeah, excellent, thank you for catching that. And that's that, that's what we have.
Excellent.
Very thoughtful.
It was, it was interesting. So, and I just want to say for the benefit of board members and others listening, that Alex and I did go back and forth on whether or not cultivation should be allowed in residential areas. And for example, a area where there are enough setbacks. And ultimately decided that the cleanest and easiest way of allowing this in the town would be to restrict it to the business districts. So because many towns that are dealing with this have industrial districts, and that's where they're putting the use, both the retail and the cultivation and processing. And we do not have industrial districts, so the business ones are the most appropriate.
And I might add, the industrial districts have usually that in the HPP as a production planner, where they say, we encourage comprehensive permit development in the industrial zones.
We have to be a little bit more thoughtful about where we place things without an industrial zone.
Without an industrial zone, it, it, it's trickier. But I, I think it's, I was, it was nice. I think it's a good, a good result. And I think town meeting will be reasonably happy if we submit it to them.
And just so you also know, we are also, we are submitting a second article which extends the moratorium. And that accomplishes two purposes. If town meeting does not vote in favor of this, if they extend it back for further study, we'd be extending the moratorium to December 31st of this year, which is the latest you can extend it to. Or if for some reason it goes, the town meeting approves it, it goes to the AG, the AG strikes it down. We still have the moratorium in place, so we can come back at the October special town meeting. If the moratorium is not needed because this is passed and the AG is happy, at the October special town meeting, we will extend the moratorium. So, but that keeps us covered of all possibilities.
All right, so even though it's your article, you can have, you can do the honest.
And I would like to move that we submit the article subsection, proposed subsection O of chapter, of section three.
Is all of it by the law?
I think it was.
I believe it is.
Okay, okay.
Out of a TV set and for inclusion on the warrant for the May 2014 annual town meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a discussion? Do we have all those in favor?
Right.
All right. So another unanimous thought, I saw Mr. Sullivan outside, I think. Yes, you did. Why don't you invite him in to tell us about his article and what we plan to do with it?
You know, speaking, in between, speaking of which section is it? I'm not sure who's responsible for updating the town's website, but it would be helpful if the, at some point, the bylaws were, zoning bylaws were fully updated.
We are, we are, we are-
I'm actually working on it.
We are very close. It's, it's probably next after we get these things submitted, that we're going to, we're going to do something that will please you.
That would be helpful.
I, I agree, I went looking for it the other day when I didn't have my book next to me. I'm like, wait a second. So it was-
Even if you have a book, some of the provisions-
Yeah, I had to actually go back to the warrant and hope that I'd taken the right votes, so. But we are working on it.
And I thought if you had got the warrants sometimes, I guess number two, I mean, alternative, the, the assisted living and the COVID were both ends, I think. So we had to figure out what to do about that. I don't know what we figured out, but we did-
In one and two.
In one and two, right. All right, now, Mr. Sullivan, why don't you come back in?
He disappeared on this.
He doesn't have to discuss it if he doesn't want to.
So is, is he submitting both of these or just one of these? Is he all just handed us two of his own articles? Here's-
Bob and I collaborated on that one.
On the shorter one?
Yes. Shorter one.
I like the shorter one. I just like the fact that it's short.
This, I couldn't tell you. Following discussions with Mr. Cronbeck and based on our own experience, recommending a modification to the nonconformity provisions of the bylaw.
This would save the ZBA some time and effort.
It should save a significant amount of time.
It's probably against our economic interest to present this, but, you know, it would save the ZBA and it would save Joe Cronbeck a lot of heartache and angst.
I think most importantly, it would be of great assistance to the residents of Milton who are considering an addition or extension to their home. We find that a great number of the residences within the town of Milton, particularly those that were built prior to 1939, do not conform with the dimensional requirements of a lot. And therefore, any alteration of it has to go to the Board of Appeals. The other thing is that there is, in the law, there's a very significant difference between the grant of a variance and the grant of a special permit. Because the grounds for the grant of a variance must relate to the soil conditions, topography, et cetera. And that is really not applicable in most, in most circumstances. Whereas this will allow the extension or alteration of a premises that is currently nonconforming, so long as it doesn't create a violation, another violation of the zoning bylaw. For example, if you were going to put an addition at the back of the house, it might not meet the sideline requirement. But providing it doesn't go closer to the sideline, you'd be allowed to do it. But you can't create a real lateline violation by going too close to the other person's house. The other thing it does, and I think it's very significant, very important, is any action that's taken by the Board of Appeals takes approximately four months. And the reason for it is that you first have to obtain a denial letter from the building commissioner on your proposal. Then you have to go to the Board of Appeals. And the Board of Appeals has to advertise it on multiple occasions and set a hearing date. Then after the, when the hearing date comes, normally the decision is made that very evening. However, they have to have a written decision and it has to be signed by all members. And since this is a committee made up of three individuals that doesn't meet on a regular basis, usually they have to send it to one person, it gets signed, sent to another person, gets signed, sent to the third person, gets signed. And it takes typically two to three weeks before the written decision comes into effect. And then the written decision has to go to the town clerk. And the town clerk has to hold it in his hand for 20 days. And if it's not appealed, then it takes effect. All these times built in means that- All these times built in means that you really get four months. So if somebody comes in the spring, and they're going to do an improvement to the house, it means they can't do it during that building period, they might be able to.
Right.
But it really creates a problem to those people that are trying to make improvements in the house, and we think that this is a good way of doing it. I think you want to see something.
I agree with what Bob said, you know, there are neighborhoods in town, you know, there are neighborhoods in this town that were built well before zoning was bad. Lots of substandard, whole neighborhoods have substandard lots, they have substandard, they have buildings that are too tall, too big, too close to sidewalk yards. You know, I live on Norton Road, there are five houses within very close proximity to me that are all nonconforming. And they are, it's a spectacular world to live on, it's a great neighborhood, but it would be very difficult for any of them to do any sort of an expansion or modification because they run into different dimensional issues associated with the bylaw. And so you run into these variance issues, and that does, as Bob says, it takes a significant amount of time. And unlike the planning board, which meets regularly, you meet twice a month, generally, and you can meet more often than that as necessary, the Board of Appeals meets periodically when something comes before them. And so it's difficult to plan when, when you have an item that would get to the Board of Appeals, because they generally don't want to meet if there's only one item, unless they know it's controversial and it's going to take a full evening to do. So it's very difficult for us to advise a homeowner who comes to us. First, they've been to Joe Prondak, generally with a set of plans that they think, isn't this a nice thing? And they go in and they're advised that they can't do it. So Joe has to deal immediately with the fallout of that, I mean, people are upset. They, what do you mean, I can't do this? This is a simple little addition to my house, it's going to make my house nicer. Well, yeah, I can't because it violates this and this and this, and you can't do it. And they have to pay and go through a process to arrive at what generally would be a reasonable alternative. So given that, and given that I, you know, I know that the other bylaw dealing with the, what defines addresses in part the difficulty that the inspectional services department has in terms of its time, its ability to enforce. They get, they get a number of these each month, and, you know, that takes time, each one of them takes time for Joe to review, to go through the process of writing a denial letter, and then, then that denial letter is what gets appealed. And sometimes, you know, often if someone calls me first, I will try to at least, I try to figure out, all right, what's the schedule? When can I get a hearing before the Board of Appeals? Knowing that it's probably six weeks out because it's the advertising period, et cetera, now I've got to try to figure out how to get those plans in place so that I can get them to Joe in, in time for him to review them, in a timeframe where hopefully we can get a reasonable hearing date. And that can be difficult, because if he's got all the things stacked up, that gets, that gets pushed out. So as Bob says, you know, something that should normally come in, be reviewed, hopefully routinely approved, you know, might be ready to go in six weeks, now you've lost a season, you've really, you've lost a year. So I think this is, it's something that could really be a benefit, particularly in a town like Milton, which has beautiful older, lots of substantive, lots of pre-existing nonconformities, houses that were built for another day, you know.
One, one final thing is that we have an awful lot of homes in which the first floor is located more than 48 inches above the average grade. And this results in the basement being called the first floor, and the first floor being called the second floor, and the bedroom being called the third floor, which of course is a violation of zoning.
And the roof being called a half-story, so you've got a three and a half story house, which is really two and a half stories.
And as a result of our bylaw, somebody has to go out and hire a surveyor to determine where the average mean grade is, so they can start measuring whether it's 47 inches or whether it's 52 inches. This is a problem that we put on inspectional services and we put on our homeowners, which is really not totally rational if we were thinking of it today, but.
So effectively, we're going to reduce the workload of the building department in dealing with paperwork essentially. We're going to reduce the workload of the Board of Appeals so they can focus on issues that are more substantive perhaps, and we're going to make residents who want to put additions onto their houses much happier because we're reducing their time and allowing them to potentially complete their entire project in one construction season instead of two.
Exactly.
I don't see a problem with putting this out for Town Meeting to look at.
Well, I'm not going to vote for it because I haven't seen it and because it's legal language having to do with a very legal section of the bylaw, and I'm not entirely comfortable with the language, so I'm not prepared to sponsor the article. Can the building inspector submit it, Bill?
Oh, the Board of, put you ahead for the Board of Selectmen, it has to be the building inspector tomorrow.
No, it, when I was working with Joe on it, it had to have gotten to the Board of Selectmen before their last.
Which was Tuesday.
Formal meeting, which was Tuesday, and the warrant, the agenda was posted last week, it was too late to change the article. So it was suggested that we come through as a planning board article, understanding that there would be public hearing on it and adequate time to review and consider the.
I like the time to review these things before I have to sponsor them, and I don't see there's any reason why I couldn't have been provided with it. But I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote to sponsor it because I'm not entirely comfortable with it, which I might be after I've, I've thought about it, but I'm not right now.
So that would put it into October for the next chance for it to come out, which isn't a bad thing so much in that the October meeting is supposed to be the zoning meeting, so we've been trying to move our stuff, but it does, it cuts out this construction year for some people.
Well, you lose the construction year anyway by the time the.
AG does it, yeah.
But my, I mean, one concern is, I have heard that the AG has determined that the, the October Town Meeting is not, may not be an annual.
It would be a special.
Because it.
It's a special, it's, it's not the annual in capital letters, annual Town Meeting, it is a regularly scheduled Town Meeting.
Special meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a regularly scheduled special meeting.
Yeah, so if I said October, I knew, I don't remember if I meant, that's not what I meant yet.
Because I had heard that, I wasn't sure what the final interpretation was, but if, let's say it were a special that didn't get called as a special because there was no, nothing on.
Right.
Then, then October would come and go, and you wouldn't have an opportunity to consider it.
Well, I know that we are planning to have an October special Town Meeting this year because we promised Town Meeting last May that we would be bringing a master plan to them, so.
And also we want to do signs.
And bed and breakfasts.
And we want to do bed and breakfasts, so there is stuff we want to do.
So the planning board will certainly be asking for.
Certainly, we've got plenty of zoning on for May, so my feeling is that we will work with you, or my recommendation is that we work with you, review this, if we are comfortable with it, then we'll sponsor it.
Let's just say this and more.
No, I think that, that's excellent.
You make much of my other side.
I think that it's incumbent upon us that, our dealing with these regulations, to make suggestions on how improvements can be made for the benefit of everyone concerned.
I think this is excellent, I appreciate you guys bringing it forward.
Yeah, and if, you said it's gets done in October or May, that's not too much of a problem.
That's correct.
All right. Well, that would be good, so that I don't think we need, we need to deal with this further.
Not, not, not before February, but we should start looking at all of our.
I mean, I will, I will read it, and I will tell you what my concerns are.
Excellent.
And I'm sure they could be addressed.
No question about that.
Because I understand the, I think it's, the purpose is noble.
Yes, and with goodwill by all, we can accomplish it, and I think that's what it's all about.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan, tell us about what you're going to write, put us through this May.
Good to see you, Paul.
Good evening.
And introduce yourself.
My name is Paul Sullivan, I live in 21 Smith Road. I'm working with some other citizens from the town on a potential plan unit development for condominiums in a B district. And we had drafted a potential funding article for the planning board and for the town to consider, and this seems to be, from my discussions around town with a few different people, that there's a lack of new townhouse type developments in the community, and, and people are always asking if there's any movements coming up, and, and I said not that I'm aware of, there really isn't any zoning in place to create them. And so the only path that I could see is a plan unit development article. And so we drafted this as something we'd like the board to consider, to review, and I, we know it's on short notice, and we just kind of came up with the last minute. There is a potential site for this, the outline of this PUD, and it would be up near the, about any assisted living, the potential assisted living site that's, could be built off the old town dump road. And the access would be a similar access point, not down through the neighborhood. So there's, there's some property that will likely get subdivided into conventional subdivision with one parcel outside of that subdivision. And it's approximately 36,000 square feet, and the access point could be either 33-foot wide private right-of-way, or potentially the old dump road, if we're able to get access to it.
Okay, well, we're going to, we're going to have a hearing on this, we're going to try and have a hearing on the 13th of February, and see what sort of input the board has for you, and, yes.
This was already submitted as a citizen's petition?
还没有 filed yet, no.
Okay, so you're planning on filing it as a citizen's petition?
I believe tomorrow's the deadline.
Yeah, okay.
Tomorrow is the deadline?
Yes.
All right. Well, we're not going to, I, I think that we're going to, we're going to take it, if you file it, we're going to process it.
Add it to the last hearings, yep.
And so, thanks for, thanks for your information, yes.
Did you just send me some stuff on Cluster 2?
That's, that's Alex's, yeah. You have to keep these in the articles, sure.
Is the meeting on the 13th, then?
Yeah, that'll be the public hearing.
Now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
I have, Mr. Cronin called me, and then actually sent me an email, and he mentioned that there's certain land up, the Calvary Land, there's, some of it is for sale. He mentioned the field at St. Paul's, which he said was eight acres. There are various component applications spreading around town. And it seemed to me that we really needed to do something with our cluster bylaw because it has languished, languished on the books. No one has known.
Nobody likes cluster.
It may have been the first thing I wrote, and I wrote it all there, and it's, it's too restrictive. It's one intention, but it's too restrictive.
No count.
And when I wrote it, I looked at the, at the zoning act that says a cluster development can have no more than the same number of units as a conventional development. And after it had gone in, people said to me, well, of course that's true, but if you call the cluster development as PUD, and you have two uses, and the uses can be residential use and open space use, and if you, if you have a PUD, PUD zoning can in fact provide bonuses for more units than would be permitted under conventional zoning. And it, it seemed to me that it was, developers are not interested in doing everything that's required for a cluster development and getting the same number of units that they'd get if they did a conventional subdivision. So what I do in this proposed amendment to subsection J of section six, is first of all, make it clear that as used in the zoning bylaw, a cluster development is in fact a PUD, with the residential use and the open space use. And number two, I say, let's encourage cluster development. So what they say, the purpose is to permit cluster development, I say, the purpose of this article is to encourage cluster development. Three, three has to do with the, the bonuses that I, I think are called for. What I've done with respect to the double A district is I have reduced the square footage, the square footage of the lot from 80,000 to 70,000, the frontage from 200 feet to 150 feet, so that when the developer goes and draws a draft plan, it doesn't have to be a, a complete plan, just a draft plan showing where the lots would be, that the development of a 10-acre site can probably come up with an extra lot with these figures, using these I didn't change the, the square footage in the other zones, because it seemed to me that it's, the double A zone is so clearly vast. I mean, 80,000 square feet lots is double what is required in the A zone. So reducing that, I even thought that perhaps 60,000 square feet would be better than that. Because there's plenty of, there's plenty of space in an 80,000 square foot lot.
Well, yeah, and the point of the clusters is to bring the houses closer together, to leave more land open.
But this is, this is, this is just for determining the number.
Right.
And, but I, 60,000 might be a better, and, and we can, we can see what people think about that.
Just to give you a idea, with 80,000 square feet, it looks like the parking lot of my house is about 80,000 square feet.
Okay, that's helpful, yeah.
But it might be that 60,000 was, was the right number.
And you might consider 30 in A.
I don't know, I, I mean, A is 40,000, I mean, you need the open space in, in A, and.
But again, we're trying to push the houses closer together, so.
This again is just a detour.
This again is just to determine the number.
The number of, why?
If somebody in A has sixty thousand, you could get two.
The double A is on the lot, the sixty thousand dollar, square foot lot. If you reduce to the double A... If they did, that's right.
But you'd have to have enough space to make it a proper cluster. We, we need to check in here that you got something...
It would be ten acres, it would be ten acres, but...
So you can't take a sixty thousand square foot lot and divide it into two, you have to have ten acres, yeah?
Get two units or...
Then maybe you still can't do a sixty thousand square foot lot, unless you have ten acres in order to apply for this, so somebody who...
Not if they have five acres, but if, if the plan that comes in at five acres...
They have a dynamite plan.
Right, exactly, yes.
Uh, but does anyone have a feeling about reducing the required amount? I, I mean, obviously, if, I think St. Pius is in the A district.
It is. What is the, what is the, the, the lot size of St. Pius? I mean, what's the total?
John, I think so, that there was eight acres there.
Eight acres?
Is that right? And it's non-wattland, isn't it?
None of it is wet. What you're talking about is the, uh, St. Pius rectory site, and it is an eight-acre site.
Rectory off of Bush Hill Road, a driveway?
Yes, seven acres of land and one full mansion.
Eight acres.
Eight acres in total.
So, so you get eight, eight units or forty thousand square feet, because it, that acre is only a little better than forty thousand square feet.
Well, you don't have to do a driveway. You'd have to create a, a...
Well, of course, Zach.
You'd have to, you'd have to...
Just say seven units.
There is, the backyard, that, that property abuts the Hyde Park project, so...
The Hyde Park, what do you mean by the Hyde Park project?
Housing, federal housing project.
Boston Housing Center work.
Is in the backyard.
Housing project, yeah.
Yeah, is in the backyard of this, of that property. And something like this could take and pull it, pull your residences closer to the Bush Hill Road entrance, and therefore leave the open space in the back.
But you're still going to get, uh, what'd you say, eight acres, so you're still going to get eight units?
Yes.
And if there were thirty thousand square feet, you'd probably get, you know, it'd be easier to get your eight, you know, but you might not get more.
Right.
I think it would.
But, but going with eight, is it eight forty thousand Milton acre, or is it the regular forty-three thousand?
Because we say that...
It's the highest of the real acres. Real, real acres, forty-three thousand.
If you took the, the...
But you wouldn't get, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, you have eight. If it's forty thousand square feet, you're still going to get eight, eight acres, even though it's a real acre.
Unless, as Alex just said, unless you drop that forty thousand to a ten.
To a ten.
Not to a ten, to a thirty, yeah.
You need to get more, you might get nine, you get at least nine, maybe ten.
You get thirty-two thousand, so you're...
But you still have to take somewhere under way.
Yeah, thirty thousand, you could get ten.
And that might be an incentive for a developer to go that extra mile.
Right, exactly.
Well, it would be. In this, in this regulation, I, I, what I do say is, uh, if you've got a, um, in an A zone, a double A zone, four hundred and twenty-five thousand non-wattland square feet, uh, you automatically get, qualify for an additional unit. And in M zone, if you've got three hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of non-wattland area, you automatically, uh, qualify for an extra building lot.
Right.
Automatically.
So, so you, you know, you mentioned non-wattland area, why can't that wattland area be the conservation area?
I was hoping, there's, there's plenty of additional area on these sites.
But he's specifically saying that you have to have a minimum non-wattland area that's not built on, and the wattlands can be built on anyway.
If you have, if you have a huge wattland parcel.
Yeah.
There's no point in, in, with a small buildable area, there's no point in giving a bonus to, uh, for that particular site.
It's going to encourage someone to build it.
But it isn't a good place to build.
They're not going to build in that conservation area anyways. But yet it's going to be counted...
Open space is not supposed to be unusable.
Yeah, and this is one of the things that I think we might want to think about adding to this if we're going to go forward to, is I think we're going to need some siting guidelines on this.
We've got, well, what we've got, if you look at your...
And I may, and I may just have just flipped through.
Is we've got a, uh, we have, it was really quite wonderful, but we've got this, time for move it on. You, you know, we've got a, just a, uh...
It's required, I have a site plan, shall be preserved.
So, so, this is up to eleven number, you've got a bonus for three, four, five, eight, nine, or is the, is your wattless, is an incentive?
And the other is there, preserve the building, I mean, I don't know what he wrote in there.
Of their existing dwelling, never mind.
Storage preservation.
Yeah, a lot of that.
But we've got plenty of, uh, wherewithal to ensure a great development.
How many carrots did you give for this? Besides, just the land?
Just the, just the...
Just the land?
For what?
For the cluster. You, the only carrot you gave is for the number of units.
Incentive, Alex.
Right, the incentive is...
Just land.
Is land and this bonus unit for upland area.
They give one for, um, and then... Storage preservation.
And then a, uh, and then a unit, uh, for affordable housing. Anyone who wants, any developer, any cluster developer, developer who wants to include an affordable unit can add a, add a lot for that purpose.
Can add, so they're only going to twelve of it, St. Pius.
Right. But of course, of course, that, that lot is, uh, isn't going to make them any money.
But it's going to take care of someone that needs it.
It's very extensive, but he's...
He's going to get as close as ten percent, Paul?
Yeah.
Paul?
That wasn't part of the question. He, he knows that the, the affordable won't make them any money. It was more the number of units that you can get.
Well...
Well, what even why the affordable won't make them any money, so they can less money?
Exactly.
It's going to make them no money. It's not going to be, it's going to be a loss leader.
Yes.
It's not, you're not going to make money, uh, lots for affordable, it's just...
You're covering your costs, period.
That's why people don't build all affordable developments, because they can't...
Well, I understand, it's not going to make as much money.
There's a ton of money. It lose, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be they didn't make any, they would, they, they would end up...
I didn't question that they make a total affordable housing unit, all twelve units or whatever the case may be. My point is if out of thirteen, one of them is affordable, you're telling me they're going to lose money in that unit?
On that unit, yes, but not, not on the whole project.
How are you certain of that? What? How are you certain of what it costs me to build a unit and what I can sell it for, uh, to a, an affordable housing?
The, of the, uh...
Is to make big size, I'll lose money.
Program in Massachusetts is that you get seventy-five percent market to cover your losses and doing twenty-five percent of, uh...
I, I just don't know how you can be certain of that. Seventy-five market might cover my cost and more.
Well, what we, what we, what I, what I was trying to do here was to get something to encourage developers to use this by law, not to saddle them with, uh, additional...
My, my point is tangent to the whole discussion, but it's just if I'm, if I build a hundred units and I build one affordable unit, you're telling me they're losing, they're losing that?
I, there is a provision that if you, you build more than ten units in a cluster development, ten percent has to be affordable. There is that provision.
Is ten percent high enough?
What?
Is ten percent high enough for what we're trying to do? If we're trying to increase affordable housing in Milton area to the rest of our housing stock, is ten percent high enough?
Once again, I, I think twenty-five percent you could get compartment for.
That's true, yeah.
So, ten percent, uh, seems to be plenty high enough. A lot of you remember that when we did brownfields development, they said five percent, and we insisted ten percent.
We've done ten percent on everything else, I'm just wondering with the conversations that have been going around town about affordable housing, if we consider it enough?
I, I think that increasing the percentage is, is not a, uh, incentive to developers to...
Well, unless we increase the bonus provisions on units, which is the other question.
I want you to, you're going to say that you can have to do two bonus units, but since you're going to lose money on them.
Well, but it goes back to the other one, is essentially what you set up in, in three is you get in A, B, and C, you get one bonus unit effectively if you have enough land to do that. Is one bonus unit enough for a developer? Taking this affordable housing aside, is one bonus unit enough?
In a double A...
Yeah, I didn't say that in A, B, or C, is one unit enough to make...
We could, I, it seems to me we could do thirty thousand in a, A district. And I would, sixty thousand in the double A.
And thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, and what sort of footage should we do in the, uh, A?
You drop fifty feet off for O, O, do you want to drop another fifty?
Not fifty.
So one twenty-five instead of one fifty in A?
I would think that we could do that. What do you think, people? I mean, that is, that's a bonus.
What?
The, the, the whole purpose of this is to develop alternative grounds, townhouses.
It doesn't have to be townhouses, but that's a really good point, is it could simply be single families, and that was, that's why I'm saying that we need to have some sort of regulation on the siting, because it, the purpose of the clusters essentially to preserve as much open space as possible. So if you're building single families, you want them to be closer together than zoning would normally allow in this area, so that you have much more open space. And, and we don't have a provision that requires that the dwellings be clustered together, that the developer can then still spread.
There is a requirement for open space.
There's a requirement for open space.
And, and, you know, if they produce the open space, uh, you give the developers, I mean, there are plenty of design guidelines there, and, um, it seems to me that, uh, what we're trying to do is give developers an option, a incentive. An incentive and an option that they are likely to use, and, and the more we constrain them, the less likely they will be to use it. And, uh, I think that these, the, we, we do have that incentive for by, reducing these, uh, these areas. I don't think that, uh, we really are particularly interested in cluster developments in B and C areas with additional...
So, in A and double A areas, if you put in a cluster development and you put in single-family homes, these single-family homes will have less of a lot than eighty thousand or forty thousand.
Yeah.
Is there any fear that, uh, you know, a person has twenty acres, he puts in a cluster development, says this is all open area, and at some point in the future decides, well, we should put, we should rezonate this area?
The, 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 the,[1452.82]
If I have a lot of acreage in this double A area, and I cluster, I'd say I'm- But then the property, I pay my taxes, the property is so significantly valued that it's- why would I do that?
Neither of the acreage is this amount of lot.
I understand that, but I have to own that space in order to develop this cluster development.
But then you've sold the houses to somebody else.
And the open space is owned by the-
Association.
Homeowners Association.
It just doesn't make any sense.
You have twenty acres, you say, I'm going to do a conventional subdivision. You do your subdivision, you sell the lots, you build the street, sell the lots, build the houses, do whatever you're doing, and walk away. Here, you get a bonus for clustering, you sell the lots, build the houses, and you walk away.
You get an additional house.
You get all more. No, you get-
Several additional houses.
But how can you- but how can you-
Several additional houses.
Oh, several. So say, like I said, instead of it being forty thousand square feet, the individual houses or contained areas are twenty thousand square feet, but I get an additional one or two houses. Do you think I'm going to get the value for those houses where they're stuck together in a twenty thousand square foot lot versus if I just built the houses as I should have been?
Well, there's going to be amenities on this vacant land that's going to-
A lot, I get about ninety percent of the acres, a lot.
Like, a lot of people, a lot of assessors say that what you do is you take your building site, and you assess that at whatever it is, and if you have additional lot, land in the lot, you assess it, but you don't assess it for anywhere near the value of the actual building site. It's the being able to build that gives the land its-
So the town might be losing-
No, it would be- He pays the taxes on this land that is put aside for conservation.
As you said, the homeowners pay for it, but at a much lesser value, it's not assessed at all.
That can bank.
But don't you see that as a loss to the town versus all forty thousand square foot lots and being assessed for a greater value?
Yes, it is.
But remember, these are lots that would be undeveloped currently now, so-
Why are they undeveloped currently?
Because if it's a cluster, if we're asking them to do a cluster development, it means that the lots are not currently developed. So there are no taxes coming from that, so there are minimal taxes coming from that.
If they develop in a customary way, it's undeveloped presently too.
Well, exactly. What I'm saying, so what you would say is that if they're developed in the customary way, you get this much taxes. We're saying if you're developing a cluster, you're getting that much taxes. But right now, you're getting this much taxes. So yes, you are giving up some potential.
Then I'm also saying the developer, if I was the developer, I prefer to build a house where I'm going to be able to sell it from more than sitting on a forty thousand square foot lot versus building six houses like that versus building townhouses.
Milton Hill has thousands, seven thousand, and many of those houses go for millions of dollars.
And also, some people-
They've existed.
But they're not. Some people believe our lots as being a detraction, because they have to take care of those lots rather than something that's attractive.
Well, that would be a burden, believe me.
And what we're trying to do is there is-
So you've agreed with me in part, the town in Milton probably will accrue less taxes from this cluster development. But it would be-
It depends on how the house is developed. No, I'm saying-
Did I say less?
I said it. His argument, his argument was that if it were a conventional subdivision-
We seem to agree with him.
And then if it were a cluster, that was his argument, but it's still more than we're getting now. But if a house on a smaller lot is more attractive to somebody because they don't have to take care of the larger lot, there may be no real difference in value to a house on forty thousand square foot versus a house on a twenty thousand square foot. A lot also depends on the type of house that's built on there, and how attractive that is. The land value isn't, the amount of land isn't always a predictor of how much that property is going to-
It's the adjacent property that'll predict the amount of the tax that the land generates.
In part, yes.
In which case, the forty thousand square foot lot is going to generate more tax.
In a double A zone, you've got eighty thousand square feet, at least sixty thousand of which is useless to the owner. No, it does-
Put a pool there, a tennis court, and-
They give it away to the trustees of reservation, like conservation.
And takes out tax credit.
But if you get to a certain point, you get to a certain point in the size of your lots, and you just can't say that an eighty thousand square foot lot is going to-
Well, not only that, I mean, one of the things that we-
Is going to increase the value versus sitting with sixty-five or sixty-two or forty.
But I think that's surrounded by dedicated open space, which is maintained in good condition. I, you know, I don't-
I agree with you on the eighty thousand square foot lot, but when you get down to a builder's acre of forty thousand square foot, that is preferable. I would think in most cases, that's preferable.
That's why I initially left at forty thousand. At forty thousand.
That's why I initially did that. Again, I get a-
What is the property? I mean, we're looking at, this board will be looking at the Polte project at the Governor Stoughton estate, which is thirty acres, and their plan is to do twenty-four acres under the cluster by law. And it's twenty-four units.
Twenty-four units, yeah.
I know, I said acres, I meant units. Twenty-four units on thirty acres, and the reasoning is because of the environmental restrictions on the existing lot. You have at least one runtle pool and potentially a second, so you're trying to protect those. Also, you'll have enough vegetated screening that the majority of the neighbors around that site won't even realize the size of the units that are in there.
So what lot sizes are they going to put in the Governor Stoughton?
It's the size of the unit, the size of the building, not the size of the units. They're going to put in twenty-four houses, single-family houses.
For bedrooms.
On what size blocks. Three acres. They're not doing individuals, they're doing, and it will be a cluster. So it's something like three, three, three Brushell Road. You've got X amount of houses inside a fifteen-plus acre site.
Eight in your backyard.
And that's, this paragraph three isn't saying what the lot sizes are going to be, is what we were talking about earlier. It's just saying how many units are going to be calculated based on the square footage of the development. So what I'm saying with the clustering is that we want those houses to be closer together in order to preserve-
Which has to reduce the size of your area.
Absolutely. That's the point. That is actually the point of the cluster by law, is you do have houses on smaller lots in these areas, so that you preserve the maximum amount of open space.
But we do require ten thousand square feet, minimum.
Yeah, there can't be any less than that.
Of what the owner of the house owns the fee, ten thousand?
Yeah.
And then your next question becomes, do you think this type of housing is appropriate in Milton? Would be a valuable addition to our housing stock? That becomes the next one. But the purpose of the cluster by law is absolutely to have the houses on smaller lots.
It's just another type house a person can buy in the town? Look at the variations of prices, millions for houses, and you can't get a house here for less than five hundred thousand, four hundred thousand? This is just another alternative.
So, but I do agree with you. I did think that the Residence A cluster could be left at the, with the one bonus unit if they have that amount of open, of decent land.
Maybe you have to go from more restrictive to least restrictive. So I would be willing to put it on to the warrant with thirty thousand with the understanding that if it's test- and when we test in the public hearing, people prefer forty thousand, we can go back to that.
We probably could go back to that.
Yeah, we can go the other way around.
You can go down, but you could go up, so I think that's, I think that's right.
The thirty thousand in the one fifty is, actually, is that more generous? Can't remember if you're going-
Thirty and one twenty-five is-
More generous.
We'll do some test cases on this bill, I think.
But as far as what we give to the selectmen tomorrow?
Well, I think that we should give them sixty thousand, one hundred and fifty in A, thirty thousand, one twenty-five in A.
Yeah, the first was double A, the second in A, yeah. Okay.
And then leave the others as is.
And then we can take it for the hearing and see what we get.
The number four has to do with affordable housing, ten percent affordable housing. If you have less than ten lots, you can either provide a lot for affordable housing, which you get as a right, or you can make a appropriate contribution to the affordable housing, the Town's Affordable Housing Trust in an amount determined as appropriate by the planning board. Open land is, that's just- Open land is supposed to be, some of it needs to be usable. You just can't put all your wetlands into open land and say we've achieved. But open land can be used for septic systems. And the septic systems, the term septic systems include the sort of package plants. Is that a septic system?
A package plant?
Well, you know, we do that type of thing, but I've never heard that. What is it? Well, there is, there is, you can have a sort of-
A central-
On-site treatment facility.
Yeah, some of these developments have non-septic system.
But there would be a septic system. Okay.
Yeah, they'd treat the stuff on the site.
In any event. Eight is, seven is just open land again, just-
From public access.
The way that has to do with, the way you do this, you do a preliminary plan like you were doing a subdivision, and you show how many lots you can get on it. And the planning board uses that. In other words, you don't have to engineer a complete plan. You can just use your preliminary plan and show the planning board how many lots you could get on it. And if the planning board looks at it and says, this is the number of lots with the street you show, and these are the waivers we'd be likely to give, that would be the number. That's how they'd compute the number.
But Alex, if there's no sewage available, then you're going to have to go to septic. And sometimes land is not perk, so they're going to have to go. So how expensive is seeing a-
But if open land, you know, if you've got ten acres of non-wetland, you're probably going to find a spot that does perk.
It's the holy roots.
That's, of course, the, that's, of course, the question. But if there's no sewer, you do septic for the lots you can do. But if you, most large sites can be made to perk perfectly adequately.
And obviously, the developer's not going to put money into a-
Yeah, they have to raise the systems up, that's topography, they're going to have to raise the leaching fields up, pump the stuff up.
So you can regrade this open space?
Of course.
Well, hang on. Are we going to do preservation or?
That's what I thought you were saying. Now we're going to cut it up?
Look at the, look at, you know, the design guideline doesn't say that-
It's green open space.
We're not going to approve someone who does that, but if they need to, if they need to raise the grade to put in a septic system, that's not the end of the world.
As long as they're not doing it next to a runtle pool.
As long as they're not doing it in or near a runtle pool.
Can you put some energy in there that the open spaces they made?
Because it's not quite existing.
There is, you know, it is, it's there. So, yeah, this is not a, I have eased up on this by law, but it still is a, it still is, offers a lot of ability for the planning board to ensure that what gets done is good.
Alex, have we done enough of research on this? Are we going to present this and then withdraw it like we did this past?
We are not allowed to do that anymore.
Well, that's right, but it just shows that-
What we're going to do, what we're going to do, Bernie, if we submit this, is we're going to have a public hearing at the beginning of February, and if there are problems with it, we're going to fix them. And if it is, this is not something which is, this is something which will work, which can work. If there are problems in it, we can fix them. We're going to have an early hearing this time.
But we can't control the land. We don't know what some of these sites look like.
I've seen that, but zoning is, that's true with all zoning.
Do we have land that this would be applicable to right now? We don't know that.
It would be applicable to Milton Woods, it would be applicable to Mr. Halligan's property, it would be applicable to the Saint Piers site, it would be applicable to the Carberry site. Be applicable, you know, and they're all different.
And you've got documents and topographies and so-
Zoning, when we did double A zoning, we just did double A zoning, we didn't go-
Why did we go the extra acre?
What?
Because we tried to ensure as much as we could, that's where the septic system would be. That's why it's two acres.
Well, I remember why we did it.
I wasn't here.
Sure, that little, yeah, I know, too.
All right.
And then the Attorney General struck down some of the areas that we wanted to put the two acres in, zoning.
In any event, look, this is, I have given it thought. I think it will work, and I think that we should put it out to a public hearing. If we don't have a public hearing on it, there's no way we can tell.
And you prefer to do it now rather than wait for October?
I prefer to do it now because I think that there are issues out there that need doing, yes.
He's got a hand raising.
I'm actually going to side with Alex, that what we have doesn't really work. What Alex is proposing actually makes some land more valuable than what it was before. I think there's a few issues all around it, going after the open space. If you're going to put the single-family house on there, you have no control over what the open space is going to look like anyways, if it's an A and R. Here, you have some potential to go back and look at what it is. This throws in something into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund potentially, or it comes back that it could be, one of the units could be on the subsidized housing inventory list. Could some points be stronger? Yeah, the part about provide a monetary contribution to the Town's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It gives a lot of latitude to the planning board that probably should be tightened up some, but it's a start that is in the-
I see that as a negotiation.
I do too, because what you have now doesn't work. The only other one that's been proposed was Chrisbrook. In Chrisbrook, they changed zoning a couple of times until they got it right. You also have it at Home Inc., at Home Inc. Works. It's not the same property that was there before they built the houses. They do, they did move the grades around, so I don't think that it's far off from being workable.
All right.
I'll make a motion. I know that we submit the amendments to subsection J of section six, Cluster Developments to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion on the May 2014 Annual Town Meeting warrant.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended with the sixty thousand and thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand and one twenty-five.
With the understanding that after the hearing and-
It has potentially been lifted after the public hearing.
It can go up.
But as far as inclusion on the warrant for tomorrow, yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a discussion? We've had a discussion.
Have we ever?
Some more.
This has to be decided to rule the word for tomorrow, otherwise it goes to October.
Yes.
Or it doesn't go at all.
Or not at all, yeah.
At least we're told to digest it.
Well, it gives us quite a lot of time, because as you know, when May ends, then summer begins. And before you know it, we're right up against the October deadline.
Oh, no, we're going to start working on the October ones in March.
All right. Do you have a second? Any further discussion?
I look forward to the public hearing, and I vote yes for this.
All right. All in favor, aye. So it's going on.
Okay, and just, I'm sorry, you don't have the language in front of you, I don't know why it's in your, it's not in your packets, but the article to do the extension of the moratorium for medical marijuana, we actually have to vote to put that on. It's essentially the exact same article that was in the May 2013 warrant, except instead of June thirty of 2014, it's December thirty-first, 2014. So I have a motion to put the moratorium article on the warrant. Ask the Board of Selectmen to put it on the warrant for May 2014, eighteen.
Yeah, I've seen this. It's really quite a nice article.
I think John Form wrote it.
Exactly. It goes on and on and on and on. He did write it, didn't he?
I think he did, yeah.
Okay. You have a point, and we have a-
I have a question for these guys. I just want to make sure that I don't miss one of these when I file them with the Selectmen.
Hang on, you've got a motion on the table first. Clear the motion, and then ask your question. Do I have a second?
The moratorium.
The moratorium. Do I have a second? Okay, thank you. Alex?
All in favor, aye.
Now you can ask your question.
Thank you.
Penalty.
I got penalty.
Medical marijuana.
I've got that, I've got the moratorium.
Cluster.
I've got the cluster.
And then you've got separately, Pauls.
We don't worry about, but these are for a hearing.
Right.
I need, I need, all right, his is for the hearing.
And the other one for the hearing, the landscape, there.
Right, I didn't miss any, thank you.
Yeah. You sure you don't want to do Ned's and Bob's while we're here? I mean, we've got so many others.
All right, I'm, no, I think I may have some changes to that.
Are there changes that could be done within the scope of the article as currently written?
Oh, wait, I do have one. At Table of Contents, I need to vote as an article, because John feels that it is a substantial change in the bylaws.
Going forward for future town meetings, can we please put the articles before the meeting, just so?
Sir, I do respect and understand how much time we put into these things, but it's like, you've got to look at it tonight and decide if we're going to vote to put it in.
But we're going to discuss it.
I know that, and you're going to be able to, too. But I always remember the last four.
I apologize on that. That is not what you said about the better breakfast last time. So if October, we're putting it in, and then we'll discuss again.
He has one.
Okay.
Okay, I think that we, this is an index that we're supposed to be-
Table of Contents.
These are the table of contents for the new one that I gave you.
All right.
These are what you were going to look at.
Does anybody-
I didn't know I was under this deadline, but let's, let's have a motion to include approval of this-
This is a table of the-
Table of contents to the zoning bylaw.
Would it be within the scope of the article to move the contents around after a public hearing? Okay, if it's within the scope, then I will make that motion.
Okay.
I'll make the quick explanation.
Although I think it would be better to do it in October.
I'll do a quick explanation, but we're going to put this thing on the warrant.
But it would be better to have it in October, just so.
Well, it would be better to get it approved.
Yeah, but Tom Newton's just going to read all of it.
Mr. Chairman, who checked this, this zoning boundary out?
Well, I, I-
Okay, all right. You did pretty well.
He wrote it, I typed it.
I typed it.
It looks just like that.
I know, I have it.
All it does is take out the meat of every one of the points, and puts it into the appendix. The appendix will be a separate document, but it'll be as big as the rest of it. If you want to go find out where it is, all you have to do is look at the contents, and it'll tell you, what do I need? I need a special permit for scientific research? Good. And it'll tell you what page to go to.
All I can say is that I think having to put this on the warrant is maybe an excess of caution. of caution.
That's fine.
Let's just, that's just.
John Thompson's the one who told me I had to have it.
All right, I have a motion to do with this that John wants.
It's removed.
Okay, and we are, all right, okay, uh, got that done.
Be ready for zoning.
Okay, now we're going to get off zoning, and we're going to discuss the women's club again, because we've.
Mary Webster Lane, the subdivision of Mary Webster Lane.
And thank you for your patience, what we went through the zoning.
So I guess we don't, I don't keep it too much, we would like to change the name of the road to Mary Webster Lane. Mary Webster was the founder of the women's club, and it was recommended by Bonnie Healy that we consider that, and I thought it was a good idea, so we're doing it, if it's okay with the planning board. And then we've made some improvements to the plan for aesthetics and for engineering reasons that have been reviewed by the peer reviewer and also DP. And I'll let Scott talk about those.
You have John Thompson's comments in front of you.
Yep.
I love a view bag.
Scott Henderson, McKenzie Engineering, good to see you all again. We've made several changes in the plan since we last met. First, I'll go over the drainage system. The original filing and approval included a surface detention basin in this area. Originally, upon filing, we were making our best attempt at providing groundwater infiltration. There were discussions with John Thompson and Lisa Eggleston, the peer review engineer. We determined that infiltration wasn't feasible on the site, which is sort of what we concurred from the beginning. So based on that decision, we eliminated the need for infiltration, yet we kept the surface infiltration basin. Subsequent to that, when value engineering, going through the construction bidding process, we determined that because we didn't need the same groundwater separation with this system that we needed, when we were attempting infiltration, we were now able to push that underground. So we replaced that surface basin with a series of subsurface infiltration chambers, HDP E Coltech units are what we specified. It improves the aesthetics of lot four, provides essentially just a front yard in this area. Our discussions with Lisa provides the same hydrologic benefit, benefit and hydraulic properties that the initial system provided, and will function just as the original approved system did. I think she's provided either a letter or an email to Bill as the final conclusion. I'm not sure if you guys have that with you. Who might be able to speak for that? The discussions also included Joe Lynch and John Thompson. Did you receive an email from Lisa or a letter finally approving?
Lisa did everything, she looked at everything except the sewer.
Okay.
I did not get anything on the sewer from her.
Okay. The sewer discussions we've had, I'll move to that. Initially, we proposed a series of, a force main in the proposed roadway with E1 ejector pumps for lots two, three, and four, due to the elevation constraint between the rear of the lot and the sanitary sewer service out in Redstone Road. Since then, we've had discussions with the abuders, the Healy and the Balfs, about the drainage easement that we had proposed on their property. They are amicable to allowing both the drain and sewer service to run through that easement. It provides a cost benefit for construction, and it's a preference for us with respect to engineering, because we prefer gravity over pumps always, just because.
And we do too.
It seems to be a trend, all right, we're on the same page. So we've realized the plan to include gravity sewer service in the roadway, services from each house to that main line, and then running through that easement. John Thompson did provide a review letter. His concern was the separation between the drain and sewer services. We had a discussion with him subsequent to that letter, where we noted that there's a gas service for the Balf house running along this edge of the property, and as such, we wanted to put both the sewer and drain lines within the easement, but on the Healy property in its entirety. He was looking for five feet of separation between those pipes. We explained our constraints to him, and we had four feet of separation, and he is okay with that. He sent an email to Bill expressing that.
I do have one thing that I did talk to John about, and that was, as in any easement, if something happens to one of those two or three pipes, you'd be staying on the ten-foot easement, and you'd be doing your digging, stocking, and everything within the ten feet. There isn't a chance in the world that you're not going to break the drain line when this happens.
Absolutely, we understand that.
And it needs to be built into the homeowner's agreement with that easement, that it absorbs the whole cost of whatever that pipe is.
That is the downside of having such a narrow easement full of pipes, and we understand that. You're correct that if you have to excavate that sewer pipe, even though it's only four and a half feet below grade, you are going to go through that drain pipe, and there is no reasonable chance of you avoiding damaging that pipe.
If it's only two.
Have to replace the sewer, you're going to have to replace the drain. It's sort of the nature of the beast here. That is understood, John, I believe we're okay with putting that into the homeowner's agreement.
That would be the easiest way to do it.
Certainly, I mean, they should be the ones absorbing the cost.
It's a lot cheaper than pumps.
Yes.
It seems like a small matter, but I don't, I don't see anything in here where anybody agrees that the horizontal separation is all right at four feet.
It's not on the second page, I know that they did talk about it today, and John didn't.
The letter says it requires five feet.
Five, yeah. Yes, that's the initial letter. John sent an email that says.
It sounds like approximately four feet will be achievable up at the top.
So, I mean, that's the discussion we've had with John.
Much separation is confined.
So we are providing adequate vertical separation. The invert of that drain pipe is at least two feet above the crown of the sewer pipe, which is general design practice, so we were able to achieve that. So.
The top letter was at nine o'clock this morning, and the back email was three twenty this afternoon.
Approval of the subdivision should be contained through the board, test, review, and progress, drainage, water, and drain pipe content, and support, bring it with the. Do you have that?
Yeah, I spoke to John about that. He was not copied on that email chain that you and I and Joe Mitch were through the process of working with Lisa. She has not seen this plan with the sewer, she has seen all the latest plans with the drain system, so. My belief was that Lisa was reviewing just drainage, but if she should be in the loop with the sewer too, we can send her this plan as well, so.
When you sent it to me, I sent it to her.
And she's seen it.
I have not heard back from her, there wasn't anything as of ten past six. It's just John at that point.
We need to wait for her review before we can take any action. Yes?
I would say contingent upon her approval.
Okay.
Because she had no problems with the rest of it, she has had discussions with it, she just didn't give me something in writing for it.
Well, I mean, the problem, however, is, of course, that you've got a plan now with a different revision date than what we reference in our decision. So.
Remand the decision.
Which all that they have, I just, no, an addendum to the decision. An addendum to the decision, and, and I could like that if.
Contingent upon the third-party approval.
Yeah.
But by then, they'll have the, you know, we haven't even written this thing, so. By then, we will have the third-party approval or not.
And the addendum should reference the name change as well.
And the name change, yes, exactly, but are people agreeable to the name change?
Yeah, absolutely. Never liked the initial name anyway.
Bill, were there any, there were no issues with the town, it's like, there's a Webster Street in town that when I.
Mary, well, it's Mary, because it's, it's Mary Webster Lane. And when I talked to the fire chief about it was, if you all think about Mary C. Lane Park, do you ever call it Lane Park? No, it's Mary C. Lane. He felt the same way, he said, no, I, it wouldn't be one, it would be the two, it would be Mary, Mary Webster, so he felt fine with that. He didn't like the original one, because it was too long and too confusing.
So we will, I, I think that what we'll do is defer, you know, the addendum, we'll sign the addendum, which would be our approval of the changes, and it will include approval of the name change, and I don't think we have to vote on anything tonight.
So do it the twenty-third?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. All right, now, the time that we have been listening to it for all evening long, there is a report.
Good timing, Alex. Well, while this is happening, I think you do a quick review, or we can let him go.
All right, well, that's, um, so, that's the first report.
Okay.
Let's do it next time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're doing that, no, so housing production side, I, I sent an email, and I think it really is true that, um.
He's been talking.
We've got lots of sites in town that could possibly contain a comprehensive permit development, and a comprehensive permit development could be, as in, there's one lot, it has its habitat, so if you land it, it often goes out, and does a little component for a single lot, and then they go away, uh, a part of the ground on it.
Sure, I think that.
And, yes, and so you can have small component development and big one.
Good idea.
You've got a big one down at Milton Mills, and I don't think anyone here thinks that that site is appropriate for the development that they are proposing, and it may be, it may be, I mean, certainly, they could propose a development with affordable units. It was appropriate there, and, and pursue a component for it, but to say that the site is suitable for component development would be a mistake, because, of course, that people would say, well, you, you write that two hundred and ninety-seven units that they're proposing, and of course, we don't. So that, the, the, when the housing production plan says identify the site suitable for comprehensive permit development, there are many sites which could be fine with certain kinds of compartment development, and they could be absolutely destroyed by other types of compartment development. And, and, you know, in doing the housing production plan, my view is that we, we really should make this clear in the plan that, uh, your site, the type of development is really very important when you consider whether a site is suitable for it. It's, a site might be suitable for a certain type of development, and might be quite unsuitable for some other types, so. And that, I think, would help make our log jam, which is that, uh, you know, the idea that you just say, oh, this site's fine for compartment development, and leave it at that. I think that if we don't leave it at that, but get into the matter a little more deeply in sort of discussing what we're doing, we may be able to, we may be able to overcome some obstacles.
So what's the process? What are the next steps we need to take? At some point, we need to meet with the board, we need to have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
Why don't we meet with the Board of Selectmen?
Other next step, okay.
Alex, could you define compartment development?
It's a development which is not pursued under zoning, it's pursued under comprehensive permit outside of zoning.
Under chapter forty B.
Under chapter forty.
It's affordable housing.
What? Except seventy-five percent of it will probably be market housing, so that, uh, because as we discussed, we discussed this earlier, that the market housing and all the profit you get from selling the market housing or renting the market housing subsidizes the less we, the affordable housing, so that's how it, it used to be that the government had, had actual money available to subsidize these developments, and there were a number of programs, such as the homeownership program and the Sharp program, which is subsidized housing, I don't know.
And something with IRP in it. So our next step is.
The next step, I, I think that we should, I think we should meet with the Selectmen, and, uh, I, I think we've got, and, and see where we're going.
Okay.
When you said land, you, you, you speak any way of identifying sites that are.
I think that's the law jam. The law jam is that the regulation says identify sites suitable for comprehensive permit development, and.
We could identify town-owned sites.
We, we can.
I agree that identifying privately owned sites is very problematic, but we could certainly identify town-owned sites, so that's.
I mean, it would be the same, because if you, say, you take the land near the Indian Bay of Grounds, you know that? To say this is fine, just throw up whatever you want.
No, I wouldn't do that, I would.
Well, I think, I think, as I put out before, the, the existing affordable housing plan from back in two thousand and six, where it lays out a lot of specific criteria, what would be suitable.
Yes, and we talked about having maps.
I always, it becomes very obvious to me, I always point to the, you know, it should develop more public transportation.
And in fact, as I recall in our last meeting, was that we were supposed to have maps, well, within those criteria for review. And maybe if we had them prior to our meeting with the Board of Selectmen, we would all have something that we could sit down.
If we had the maps, I thought you said we could identify locations, and then we could more or less like grade them.
Yes.
And which were more appropriate.
Right, but that wasn't our strategy, we needed a, a new set of maps that took those criteria.
So even if you had town land, you just, like you just spoke, Alex, in the Indian Bay of Grounds, if you look at this criteria, I would assume it doesn't suit much of this criteria, so it may be, you know, uptown land, but it may be not suitable by this criteria for.
Well, I, I think you're right, just because it's town-owned, we have to rush to.
Again, I think this, this more or less defies suitable locations.
Let me talk to, as a next step, let me talk to Lisa Sonnberg, Karen Sonnberg. They're obviously about, about her thoughts on this thing, and I'll report back to you.
They have obviously reviewed this plan that existed since two thousand and six, I believe, I would assume.
Who has?
The people that are doing the housing production plan right now.
Karen was doing the.
Yeah, she did that, she, I mean.
She actually wrote that.
Via criteria.
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Where's the Indian Bay of Grounds?
It's, uh.
Good question.
It's a misnomer. It's not.
It sounds like Indian heads, Indian arrowheads. It's with the Aquarius, Indian Aquarius. I know where that is. I'm not supposed to know, but I know where it is.
Don't.
The archaeologist showed me.
Don't. Don't.
And all that, that can be issues.
I live for sealed.
Okay, so your next step is you'll talk to Karen.
I will talk to Karen.
Are you going to set up a meeting with the Board of Selectmen?
I would, I would say that to her because if that's something that, uh-
So you will report back on the 23rd?
I will report that, I will report that after I talk to her.
23rd would be a good date because then the February meeting is going to be nothing but zoning, so.
Oh, 23rd, yes, yes, no, I think that that's right. The 23rd of this month. I was thinking, we're talking about zoning later.
No, 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 we wouldn't do that.
Just, is there any question, Alex? I'm still looking, is it possible, I've stopped listening, is it possible to get any information that's to be discussed at a particular meeting at least a week ahead of it? I mean, is that-
That's impossible.
Is it something you could set as a-
It's probably too early for that.
I know what I mean, is it something you could set as a criteria for meeting that you have to have the information is because you, I mean, you ask to decide on something the night you receive it, it's six pages long, it's kind of, I mean, isn't it a bill that first comes on board? That's- But no, I don't think it's a New York City or Bozeman or anything like that. I think it just shouldn't be required every week.
Those people are saying that they hadn't written it seven days ago.
Should have added, but I mean, it should be a requirement if you have it seven days. At least seven days. If you fail to review, be myself or anybody, that's too bad, but when you get something that night, you ask to make decisions on it.
The clients I work with, the various towns I work with have policies about when we get them information and they're all required for packets that go out at least a week before the meeting. I would prefer that myself because I, my time is, I basically do the weekend to release stuff, so if I don't get something till Tuesday night-
Do you want to add in motion?
Yes.
I mean, that would put people that up against it.
I think that, I think what we're going to do is until Bill has an assistant town clerk, who's principal, who has-
Yeah. That's-
Again, I don't think it should be, it should be-
I'll give it to you a week ahead of time. It just means that a lot of these things have got shut up, like-
Well, they should.
Like that, the Mary Webster Lane thing that you just did.
It should have been, it would have been on the next one. I mean, it's silly, I mean, I don't mean to affect the people that are coming forward, but it's silly to even come forward and present this to people that is supposed to make a instantaneous decision on it. That's absurd.
Exactly.
But, well, you know, they explained that. It's weird, but they ask to make a decision. No, 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 we postponed it because that was relative to that particular case.
But without, you know, if they hadn't, if they hadn't come in, then the idea, then it would have been all up in the air and they would have had another two weeks to wait.
Small, like that, maybe, but for something really winning six pages of text, agreed.
I think it should be, the goal should be for anything.
Yes.
But if a person wants to-
If you set a policy and put it on a website and somebody calls up to Bill or Jane and says, oh, I'm doing the planning board meeting on this Thursday, and they say, sorry, you have-
Why don't we put it, I mean, you have a couple of orders for the public like that. I mean, when we order a plan, the planning board has to act within 20 days of it's being filed with the town clerk or it gets automatically approved.
So an A and R gets one exception.
You meet every other, potentially every other week. You'll meet in two weeks and you're going to make me cough. The, if you ask them for something, they have to have it within two or three days in order to make that, that week for the next meeting. Fine?
For what time?
The other thing, you know, some things-
One of the best efforts.
I will make it that you have to get it before the, before the weekend.
You know, but I have also seen in other towns is they have, they do their entire year's schedule in advance. They actually publish it, so these are the dates that the planning board is meeting, these are the dates that everything's due, it's on the website. I mean, you know, you meet the-
I'll leave it at this, I'm just speaking at the same point we're speaking to. It's being discussed as a, as a, as a time barrier. I'm not discussing it as a time barrier workload, I'm discussing it as a, it's that intelligible to do it, to give people, read some paperwork and say, what do you think tonight? Just go at it tonight. The deadline is tomorrow. Or did I, then we should have got it two weeks ago or should-
You would have gotten it last day. It was two weeks ago.
And again, I respect the time and effort that you put into these things, but it should go to the next meeting.
Then, of course, let you pass the deadline and people should have planning board as-
We should have been doing this last week and we had a snowstorm. So that would have cut down some of it. Agreed. And we would have had, actually would have had a deadline the next day. So that doesn't help us at all, that was what I was thinking of. They actually knew the deadline because we couldn't meet last night.
I think we should also add a motion, a requirement that information's be-
Well, that's a particular question to you.
The first place should be a fast update to make sure that the information is available.
All right. packets go out on Thursday before.
Well-
Yes. packets go out on Thursday before.
That's a-
Don't ask to get to either, it's weekends.
You don't get any of the material that you need.
You told me, you don't need it.
You may need to be minimal, though that's bureaucratic.
Alex, I hear, I hear often that you've discussed something before, I want to get this one from. But basically, I don't have time to do that. If I can't get the information to read a week ahead of time or something, then I'm sitting there listening to you discuss things and I'm lost sometimes. You talk about things that you've already communicated with people on, that I was not in the circle of communication, so it's, and you ask to make decisions. I'm just saying, I continue just to make the point. I can't make a decision without any basis of the decision.
Well, if somebody comes to introduce a packet to us or to make a change like tonight on what is now Mary Webster Lane, I don't have a problem with them coming in for something like that as long as we've made the open meeting laws for hosting, you know, a few days before, but the vast majority of our packet we should get a week before. And that would require some discipline on my part to get you some things that I've been working on.
Why did they make this change? Was something pointed out to them that it-
Yeah, the engineer didn't, didn't like it. So do you have to be member in that case?
No, but if they did their job correctly to be in, they wouldn't be coming back for change, so.
But you made them, they were doing value engineering, they were doing a couple of other things that they were out there.
Just say that, I gotta make a decision today because you want to make a change with your-
But one thing, don't take this particular decision, but if it's something that we've talked about before, it's a minor modification, it's something like that, I don't have, it would be nice, I would prefer to have the information.
Sure, we want to accommodate people.
But we can be, as Alex said and rightly so, we can be member to accommodate people. But if it's a lot of text, if it's an issue we've never seen before, certainly if it's plans we've never seen before, it has to come in a week before. And we've tried it on various occasions and some of the people we've worked with as far as developers coming in front of us have been good about that and getting, and some have, not to put it mildly, and some have actually canceled hearings because they haven't been able to give us the information that night, never mind a week before.
I don't think some of the people listening out there would think it's rather silly if they understood that we're trying to make decisions on things.
We need to have the-
When the information was just brought up that day.
Yes, I agree.
All right. So I guess you've got the first of that.
Yep.
Okay, we have a-
We need to.
We have two pieces of information and then we have our favorite motion.
Yes.
The master plan committee is next meeting on the 21st of January and we are looking to set off next date. I haven't checked it with the other members of the committee yet, but I met with the consultant team today. We talked about scheduling, we talked about when we're going to get deliverables. Our current hope is to do the second master plan committee meeting of the year on February 10th and the first public forum on March 1st. I just need to check locations. We've got, I believe, it's a Saturday, so we're going to do the kickoff forum. We've got our biggest attendance during divisioning at the Saturday meeting and we've got a lot of things we want to cover with people. So we'll do a kickoff and they mentioned something about food, but I will keep you all updated. And as for the second thing, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be adjourned.
Second. Oh, David.
No discussion?
No discussion required.